We are recording and we are live. Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The Ward County Commissioners, June 8th, 2025. Stand and we will do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the public with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
And a few items for your consideration tonight. Our first would be a request for the release of surety. It's a commercial drive, C 20-023 by Macon Corporation. Danny Ubler, President. We're holding 2,044 and 50 cents in escrow, guaranteeing the construction. They've had three years and they've certified that it's been completed. The county engineer has signed off on the construction.
The driveway is complete. Recommend release of the surety.
Make a motion to release the surety.
One second. Have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a sidewalk acknowledgement. It's for Essex at Berkshire PUD Phase 2. Macon LLC by Daniel Ubler, President. Highland Drive at 737 lineal feet and Alena Drive at 1,734 lineal feet. We're currently holding the 18,135 for the construction. The county engineer has signed off on that construction as well.
Sidewalks are constructed. Recommend acknowledgement.
Make a motion?
One second. First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a street acceptance for Essex at Berkshire PUD Phase 2. Macon LLC by Daniel Ubler, President. Alena Drive at 895.73 lineal feet and Highland Drive at 374 lineal feet. We're holding the letter credit for 31,773 and the county engineer has signed off on that construction.
The punch list items have been completed and they are in compliance with the approved street plans. Recommend accepting the streets remain.
Make a motion to accept?
Second.
One person, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's 3-0.
With street construction plans, it's primary plat PP 2504, Waters Edge, number 7. Petition owners Paradise Villa Homes LLC by Mike Metzger, President. It's approximately 49.027 acres on the north side of Welty Road, 384 feet east of the intersection of Welty and North Zoro Church Road. It's outlots F and G in Waters Edge subsection 2. Campbell Township, it's 16 and 17, 5 and 9, and they are requesting no improvements to Welty Road, which is currently a gravel road.
This is two large lots over 20 acres apiece, I believe, and therefore I have no issue with recommending no improvements. If it gets subdivided further, then I would probably come and ask aboard.
Are these the same lots that we just looked at? Okay. Make a motion to approve?
One second.
First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's 3-0. Thank you.
We have another primary plat PP 2505, Eppworth Lincoln, number 4. Cross Road Christian Church by Ryan King, ED of Operations. Approximately 36.7 acres on the east side of Interstate 69, 0 feet north of the interstate of Lincoln Avenue and Interstate 69, being lot 1 and Eppworth Lincoln 2, parcel 3 in Eppworth Road Minor, and part of Track 2 in Gateway Center Minor, sub amended. Ohio Township, 26, 6 and 9, and they are requesting no improvements to Eppworth or Lincoln Avenue.
Jim Morley, Jr., project engineer. This is the same property we were hour and a half ago on, and there are no new construction planned at this time, so we're seeking no new road improvements.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And that is all that I had.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. So, A, do we know we're tabling that again?
I just left it on there, so it would be reminded. If you wanted to keep it on there or take it off, it's up to you. I figured we'd table again.
Yeah, I think we can probably just take it off until she brings forth some more if she wants.
She was going to do some more research.
Okay. Okay. So, no action on that one. Item B, appointment of health administrator.
Hi.
Hi.
Julie Shade with the Ward County Health Department. I'm just here if you guys have any questions for any hire.
Okay.
Or if you're.
What's her name?
April Hicks.
April Hicks. Yeah. So Stacy and I had the pleasure of sitting down with her for about an hour or so, meeting her and kind of hearing what her vision is for the Health Department and for Ward County, and I was very impressed. How are you feeling?
I liked her. Yeah.
Have you had that opportunity?
No. I'm good, though.
Okay. Yeah, her resume was impressive, especially after we walked through it and understood the longevity of each place that she had been. It made sense.
Dr. Kari and I are very impressed. I'm very happy with her, so we'd like to give her the chance to see what she can do with the Health Department.
I agree. She has a very positive, good energy. Yep.
I'll make a motion to appoint April Hicks as the health administrator.
I will second. Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Action agenda, item A, approval of the minutes for May 28th, 2025. Stacy, you're the one that always goes through with things. Please call. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So tonight for the consent agenda, I have the first three items. Number one is the payroll report, payroll voucher for 516 in the amount of $703,125.82. The treasurer's May monthly report and the accounts payable voucher in the amount of $1,632,557.22. Need a motion to approve all three.
So, my.
Second. First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last item I have is a request. Go ahead and let Holly talk.
Ward County Soil and Water Conservation District, Holly McCutcheon. So, we have purchased a truck. Since 1952, when we were formed, we never had a vehicle, so we were pretty excited. We did contract work and we were able, so no county funds were utilized in order to purchase the truck. So, we were wondering if we could use the gas that the county has for the truck is what we were asking for.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Currently, you don't have any in the commissioner's budget. You do not have a gas line item. The only one in there is for animal control, and they purchase from the sheriff's department.
Okay. Which is, I think, how most counties or most departments do it, right?
Bobby would have to tell you about how.
Most come through my department. We.
I'm sorry?
Most of the county offices come through my department.
Highway Department. Okay.
We have a system that they use and then we send them invoices every month. In this regard, I didn't know what was happening when the request came in, so I had a few questions for her, and I think she's answered those. I was just concerned because there is no fuel line item in her budget. I didn't know where her office got their budget from. My understanding is commissioners have some of the personnel, but I didn't know about office supplies and.
So, we have a cobbled together system. We get money from stormwater. We're under stormwater for some of our budget, and then we get money from the state, Indiana State Associations of Soil and Water Conservation Districts, and then we also then do contract work out. So, we're kind of cobbled together. We have, two of our employees are county-funded. Susan King is through the stormwater department and Bree Schaffner Fisher is through the commissioners. And then we have a grant-funded watershed coordinator, and then they self-fund me. That's kind of how we are.
So, you're really the state, you're the department of agriculture?
No, we are county level. All soil and waters, every county in the United States has a soil and water conservation district.
How did you handle gas expenses prior?
So, before, we were able to utilize the Natural Resource Conservation Service Jeep, and we would, they paid for the gas, we'd pay for insurance, or we would utilize our own vehicles, and then we paid ourselves out of our budget. We would pay that way. That's how we would reimburse ourselves for driving our personal.
So, could that be handled the same way as like the other departments that you could invoice her department?
Yes, as long as there's a budget to reimburse us from.
It's not difficult to put a line item in their budget.
I don't know what their budget states, so they're not, we don't have their expenses.
From where were you paying it?
So, we were just paying out of our budget that we were getting. So, again, we get $20,000 from the state, and then we get money then from stormwater, and that's how.
So, what did you call it?
We just called it our gas fund, within our own budget, our own personal budget. This is that we did mileage. We called it mileage because we're reimbursed for mileage.
So, it sounds like, I guess, down to the point, you're willing to pay for the gas. You just want to get it out of the, that's kind of what I was.
I think that's, that's what we're all getting at.
Yes, yes, yes.
There was a lot of confusion in that email. I agree.
And I apologize for that. We had thought she left now. But, no, Sherry thought she was talking to someone, another Holly. So, when I initially started this conversation, it was already, and then at the very end is when she figured out I wasn't the Holly that she thought she was talking to. So, that's where the confusion.
Access and then you'll be billed and you'll continue to pay.
Yes, I thought I was, you know, dogging on my eyes in the very beginning before we started looking for a vehicle, but obviously I did not.
That's a good ask. You can do the economy of scale that we get on our fuel contracts. That's good for you.
It's very good for us. Yes.
I don't think we just, we don't have the money to pay for it on our end.
And I understand the county is, yes, I understand county budgets. So, no, you will be paid, Bobby. I apologize. We will not, we will not take, we will not take that without paying. I will make sure of that. So, and then somebody said I could ask, I can always ask, about insurance. Is that something we could be included in the fleet insurance or not? It's just, you can ask.
Sherry. I mean, you get a question for the insurance broker.
Okay.
So, we can.
Who's titled, who's titled on the vehicle?
Ward County Soil and Water Conservation District.
The question for the broker, and then just the additional cost if there is, so.
Okay. Thank you. Right now, you know, I got a quote from Farm Bureau, but I was just wondering, you know, if we could.
So, I could get a quote from ours for you, so you could decide.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm not sure.
I agree. I'll do an official motion to allow the gas card.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And then, okay, so first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that enough on that?
Yes, I can talk to Bobby later. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Sherry Severs, Ward County Acquisition Administrator. First thing I have on the agenda was tabled from the last meeting, and that are the cleanout ports for B and G. I did speak with Tyler Rickenvall today, and Tyler stated that he recommended this because it allows the maintenance and service to be performed more efficiently and correctly. The actual drain is hardlined into the units, and it only gets cleaned if there's a clog. So, adding the port permits the service crew and maintenance to remove a device on the end of the port and clean and flush that drain line. Without the port, if there is a clog, the drains have to be cut and remove the blockage and then clean the line afterwards. The line must be re-glued and reconfigured to the unit. Over time, by re-gluing continually, this results in multiple glued connections, which can result in a problem.
Sure.
So, today I bring before the commissioners, again, the bid from B and G for 1,0264 for cleanout ports installed on the HVAC systems located in the ceilings, in the ceiling at the JC.
What was Brad's response?
Brad didn't think we needed them, but Commissioner Seton basically wanted some type of comment from the professionals that do that.
Because they're the ones that clean this out, not Brad.
Right. We actually have a service agreement with them now, and that's part of their service agreement, is coming in and flushing the lines. So, and that gets done once a year, I think, in the spring. And so, what will happen, you'll have to cut the line, flush it, re-glue it. This just, each time.
Okay.
So, this just makes it. Yeah.
Because, like you said, every time they have to flush it.
Right.
They have to cut the line, go back together in a potential breach.
Re-glue. Yes.
I think it just makes sense.
To have a professional do it.
Well, into one cut and the.
It's done.
Access is there.
Makes everybody's job easier.
Yes. Make a motion to approve?
I don't think it's necessary, and we are low on budget. I'm going to say no.
So, these are in the ceiling?
Mm-hmm.
And if one of the go-to areas leaks, we're looking at.
Then, more than likely, you'd have to go back and put a port in at that point.
And then the potential damage that it causes. Okay. I'm going to second the motion. So, first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You and I are in abstaining.
Yep.
Thank you, commissioners. The next thing on my agenda, we've got some contracts to ratify. The first one is ratify the proposal for the CivilCon. Highway Department has received a quote number 9200 from CivilCon for the bridge project number 221 totaling $197,426.25 to ensure that the charges align with our contract with CivilCon and to address any potential inquiries in the future from SBOA. Bobby Howard requested that CivilCon attach Exhibit A, that is in your packet there, to the quote. The exhibit provides a detailed breakdown of our contracting price with CivilCon. Bobby Howard has confirmed that the quote is consistent with our contracted prices. Therefore, I respectfully recommend that the commissioners ratify CivilCon's contract quote number 9200 for Bridge Project 221 in the amount of $197,426.25 on behalf of the Ward County Highway Department.
Sherry, do you want to do these one at a time, or?
However, Cliff says we need to do them. I don't know.
You don't have to do them one at a time. You can do them all at once, and if any commissioner wants to make their motion just specific to any one or all, you can. I'll make a motion for one at a time. I'll make a motion to ratify the contract for CivilCon.
One second. First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. The next one is for Dayville On-Site Services. As discussed in the last commissioners' meeting, I have received a revised estimate from Dayville On-Site Services for replacing batteries in five county generators. We did remove the service for the Chandler EMS and the stormwater and highway building located off of Van Road. The previous cost was 1,0914.28. The revised total is 1,394.95. I recommend that the commissioners approve estimate number 1033 from Dayville On-Site Services in the amount of 1,394.95, which covers the battery replacement for the five county generators as specified per our county generator contract.
So, those other items were removed for separate?
Yeah. We've already got the one at Chandler taken care of, and then I believe Bobby is working with Evapar because that generator is going to be a year old.
Right. It was still, should have still been under some.
Possibly still be under contract.
Their warranty that they, we had done a material contract with them, a maintenance contract with them, and I was checking to see what that involved versus what's going on. There is a small leak under the valve cover of the engine, and they're trying to come back and say, well, that's, that's a gasket. That's not warranty item. And so, it's a wear and tear item. So, I'm still working with them on that. They've tried to put another, did you get the other one I sent you? They sent another contract saying my first one is expired, and I don't see how because it was just done in June of last year. So.
What they're saying is.
I'm trying to discuss that with them.
They perform both of the services per that contract, and I guess they've done it early.
So, they, so their position is the contract ends when that second service is complete?
Apparently.
It was a year.
Okay.
And they were supposed to do the first service at six months and the next service at six months. So, I don't know when they supposedly showed up and did that second service.
Stay on them.
Yeah, we're trying.
All right, but now you need a motion to ratify. Okay.
Make a motion to ratify the contract with Dayville Services.
Second. First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. The next one is Five Star Security Ratification. At the last commissioners' meeting, the panic button arrest system was approved from the only submitting bidder, Five Star Security Systems, in the amount of $23,113. Commissioner Seton has ratified that contract. There are two other service proposals needed to be addressed from Five Star regarding the panic button arrest system. The first is the proposal for the annual battery testing and replacement service. It's an annual fee of $1,550. This service is important for ensuring the performance and safety of our batteries through the regular maintenance. Annual approval for this service will be required from the commissioners each year. I would like to respectfully recommend that they approve and for the approval and ratification of this service contract.
And the monitoring service is just for the, exactly what it says it is.
Yeah. Right. It's to monitor how, when it dispatches the authorities, and that's, that's an annual service fee of $540 that would come before the commissioners annually as well.
I approved it last time.
Make a motion to approve both the annual battery testing and replacement and the annual monitoring.
Second. First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item on my agenda is the UniFirst Uniforms Contract. Currently, we only have one employee in the county using the uniform service, and that's our maintenance director, Brad Downing. We are currently incurring a weekly charge of $37.58 for this service. We've been unable to locate a current contract for this, which has led us to believe that the auditor may not be able to continue processing these payments. In February, I reached out to Uniform and asked them to halt the services, and that Debbie Bennett Stierman made sure that all the payment obligations were current through December 31st, 2024. And so, in light of that, I kindly requested that they suspend our uniform deliveries because we are probably going to be unable to pay for them, considering we don't have a service contract in place. They did send me a snippet of a service contract. They've informed me that the service contract is good until December 8th, 2026. I would respectfully have to argue that. I show that our contract ended in 2021, and I cannot locate an agreement since then. So, today I respectfully ask the commissioners if they wish to continue uniform service with UniFirst. Additionally, do we need to bring the legal team in with the contract issue and to get that legally taken care of? I have provided Cliff and Erin with information we've received, and then, of course, you all have it in your packets there. It was put out for bid two times, tabled, two meetings, put out for bid. It was awarded to UniFirst, but there was never, in the meantime, everyone at the Highway Department opted not to take that service. We only had one person.
So, I don't see that need to.
Yeah. So, there was never a final contract done.
So, we need a motion to terminate the contract?
If that's what you choose to do, and then do you want legal to handle the termination of that contract?
It's $37 a week. I'd say we just send it to them and see what they say. I'm good with canceling it for sure.
Yeah. It's just whether it needs to go through.
I would say no. I do see, just looking off the cuff, and Bobby pointed this to me too, it looks to be there is an auto renewal for 60-month periods, five-year periods. So, I agree with, I think it was Terry, send them a cancellation. If they give you pushback or talk about a fee, then maybe, in my opinion, then that's when I get involved.
Okay. If that's what you wish to do, then I can send the cancellation and just copy Erin on that.
You don't even need to copy us.
Okay.
You just send it out and then wait to hear back.
Okay. So, that would be your motion?
Make a motion to cancel the contract.
Via letter from?
Via letter from Sherry.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
So, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. And the next item I have is a declaration of surplus items, computer monitors and laptops. We have several computer monitors and laptops that need to be moved out of the current maintenance room so we can schedule electric work for cleaning and painting in there and get that ready for the files for the clerk. We've got 45 computers, 32 laptops, 42 monitors with stands and 10 monitors without stands. There will be a charge at the landfill to dispose of these. 42 monitors with flat screens, $126. 10 monitors without stands, flat screens are $30. Total cost of disposal, $156.
I was hoping you were going total, not per item.
No, no, that's total.
Having a mild heart attack.
Yeah. Guy has provided you all with an itemized list. It includes make, model, serial number for your records. Today, I am simply asking the commissioners to ratify the decision in a public meeting for the record, and we did do a consensus email on this earlier in the week.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
3-0.
Thank you, commissioners. The last thing on my agenda, I just put it on there. I don't have anything to report, and that was the proposal for Midwest Roofing for the Discovery. And that total should be like 3,000 something. Okay. For doing the Discovery on the Judicial Center. I don't know if you want to just table it and put it back on there when we address those issues.
I'd like to start a discussion about that as well as the Fourth Street garage, but that's probably not a in-meeting discussion right now. So, maybe table the Discovery
Okay.
until we can talk about resolving the Fourth Street.
Okay.
I'll just make a motion to remove it from the agenda for now.
One second, commission.
First and second on favor.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Make it short.
The only thing I have is supplemental agreement number one. This is an agreement with S J C A consultants regarding the supplemental agreement for construction phase services and a not, fee not to exceed $15,000. And this is due to unanticipated construction phase services costs that went beyond normal involvement with that bridge. And I would, I have reviewed and would recommend approval for not exceed a mountain of dollars. And if we don't use all of that, we don't get built. So they're going to try to keep it. I'm asked that they keep it as frugal as possible, but if they've had fees, we're going to pay the fees.
See, that's, that's a supplemental agreement, not a change order.
Supplemental agreement, yes.
Make a motion to approve the supplemental agreement.
Second. First and second on favor.
Aye.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Next on my agenda is we have a contract, the county has a contract with Project Partnerships LLC, specific to the Geo Bond Series 2023. It's my understanding that the commissioners may want to terminate that specific contract for convenience, but still request project partners helps and continues to assist the county in other projects, including the jail project, which my understanding is going very well.
Very well.
So I just need a motion to terminate that.
I'll make a motion to terminate.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
I might have vote no on that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Put that in its official notes.
Nope, can't change it.
Okay, so.
Two to one.
Two to one.
Yes.
Okay. Teri, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Stacy?
I have nothing.
Let's do it.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, comment from the public.
Comment. I don't think anyone.
Aye.
Aye.
I've gotten old since I came here last. I'm Diane Porville. I am from Newburgh and I am also a constituent of all of you. I had an incident with the animal shelter and I, it was very interesting. I'm all of a sudden seeing animals, dogs running loose and also a lot of cats, okay, in the seventh street, Gum Street area, up in that area. But anyway, back to the dogs. On the 16th of May, I was going down Yankee Town Road and I believe the property belongs to Rudolph's and it has McCormick equipment in there. So there's a nice big sign that says McCormick. And there sat the most beautiful husky, just sitting there watching the traffic go by. So because I do not want animals to get killed, I don't like to have them running loose, et cetera. I swung around and had a conversation with the dog and the ultimate result was she ended up, I think it was a she, ended up in my truck riding shotgun while we tried to figure out what to do with her. My answer to the problem, it was six o'clock at night. The vets were closed, the animal shelter was closed, all the other places are closed. So I went to the sheriff's department and Officer Jalen, who is wonderful, he came out and he, he took a picture of the animal and I think the, I think he was going to put it on Facebook. I'm not sure that that ever happened. But anyway, finally went back to where I found the animal and started knocking on doors. Now I think you noticed how I'm now hobbling around. So I'm on all these front yards that are not even. But anyway, finally found the owners. The dog had a tag that had the batteries, you know, for the invisible fence. So when I pulled in the driveway and called out and I said, hey, do you know anybody that owns a husky? And they said, oh, that stupid dog. Anyway, then they said that the battery was dead. That animal had no tags. Okay. But I found its home. Two weeks later, on Gum Street, we had a visitor that was of the looks and about the size of a good sized lion. It was a mastiff that was running loose. Had four, four collars. I think that was one that had four collars, a flea collar, two regular collars, and then a real heavy duty one that again had one of these gizmos that was supposed to be a fence, you know, invisible fence. That time it was about a quarter after three. I called here and Deborah, I think it was you that I spoke with, and she was kind enough. She found Stacy and because I wasn't able to get any response at the animal control, my understanding is that person's dad had passed away or, anyway. I think Stacy found the animal control person who was on duty and that person showed up. And then the fun began because the owner showed up at exactly the same time. But anyway, the animal had no tags on it. And also the, the young woman that came in your, in the truck was having difficulty finding us and she commented that she did not have a GPS system. Right? So that's point number one. But my other issue is, I think somewhere in the, in all my calling, it said to call the sheriff's department if you've been bitten by a dog. It didn't say what to do if you found one. And in my lifetime, it seems to me every time I've ever found a dog late at night and I've called, no matter where I lived, and I've lived a lot of different places, they said, can you corral that animal and we'll come get it tomorrow? All right. So I think I have a solution for what it's worth.
I'm going to work at animal control.
We need people.
First of all, they need to have GPS systems, but they're going around trying to find people. But also, I, I went to the animal control and talked to the lady that's in charge there and she was very nice and very helpful. And she showed me how the reader works. It's a little gizmo about this big. You put it between the collarbone of the dog or cat and it will read a number. Then that number corresponds with the report that the individual has given when they first registered their animal. So my suggestion is for $79 apiece from Amazon, I'm sure there's tax, but you're taxing them. Anyway, maybe all the police departments could have these because the end result is if we find an animal late at night or even in the late, you know, early evening, the object is to get it home again. It seems so easy to me to be able to tell the public, you can call the sheriff's department. If you, if you have this, bring the animal to the sheriff's department. We'll read it and we'll call them and then the issue is taken care of. Now I did not put the mastiff in my truck.
I was trying to picture that.
I did, I did learn my lesson the first time because the other animal, even though she was beautiful, she smelled high heaven. And so my truck smelled high heaven for quite some time after. But anyway, that's my suggestion. So, you know, all your other really big problems, this is a little teeny problem.
Beautiful suggestion.
But first of all, let's face it, sometimes people are very frightened of animals. And if somebody had been face to face with this dog, the last one especially, they would have, they might have been frightened even though the thing, even though the animal was just wonderful. We gave it water and then it tried to eat the dish that we put the water in. But other than that, everybody was petting it and so it was, it was fine.
Thank you.
Diane, I do, I do want to tell you that I did, I was the one that contacted animal control and I did contact the lady whose father died and she made sure that somebody got out there. So I wanted to give kudos to animal control as well.
And I went out there to thank them. Okay. And also, anyway, from that I got the how to do the reader. And that's really what I wanted to know was how the process worked. And it seemed so simple to me. You know, we've got all this wonderful modern technology. We should use it. And again, the object is to get the animal home. And then, and I, actually I think if they're still out and somebody has to call on it, the person should still be fined for their animal not having a tag on it.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks. Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys. I am running to my conference.